Well, good evening everyone and welcome to the Ferndale City Council meeting for Monday, January 25th, 2016. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Council members Leaks May?
Here.
Martin?
Pollocka?
Here.
Piana?
Here.
And Mayor Coulter?
Here, thank you. Councilman Martin isn't feeling well this evening. Can we have a motion to excuse his absence?
I move to excuse Councilman Dan Martin's absence.
Support.
Support. On favor say aye. Thank you. Our next item of business would be the approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
All right. Moved by Piana, supported by Pollocka. You gotta get in quick.
I know.
Oh, I learned that the first time.
I was gonna say it's supportive.
Is there any discussion? All right. Marnie, would you call the roll, please?
Council members Leaks May?
Yes.
Pollocka?
Yes.
Piana?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter?
Yes, thank you. The agenda is adopted. So, moving on to presentations, and we have, it looks like we have four presentations this evening. The first one by our Ferndale Public Schools, and I see Amy Butters, are you giving that presentation this evening?
Council's new board member, Jackie Hart.
Oh, yes. I hadn't met her yet. She's got a special guest.
Yes, I do have a special guest, which we're gonna get to in a minute, but first I do have some news to pass along to the council about what's going on in the district, in the Ferndale Schools district. It's all going on this week. This is a very busy week in the district this week. So, first of all, I want to talk to you about our Ferndale High School kids who are participating in a very cool entrepreneurial event, and it's associated with a TV show called "The Profit," which is on the CNBC TV network. And this is a show, it's one of those reality shows where the host of the show comes in and hears different business ideas, and kind of gets, you know, it's a competition, right? And so, we have kids, we have teams over at Ferndale High School who have been working on a presentation for this program. And "The Profit," CNBC, is in town today and tomorrow, and they've been over at the high school, and they've been filming the kids' presentations for this competition. I'm not sure how many teams we've got. We've got, I don't know, eight or 10 or 12 teams, I think, or right around that number of teams, who are competing for the, as part of this TV show. And so, tomorrow at Ferndale High School, there's going to be an all-school assembly at 11 o'clock in the morning, and the TV show's gonna be there, they're gonna have the kids that are participating make presentations, and it's going to be, you know, pretty exciting. The winners will be revealed, and there's going to be prizes, and there's going to be lots of, I'm gonna say there's gonna be a big surprise, which I don't even know about the board, the school board doesn't even know what the big surprise is that they're bringing to Ferndale High School. And so, that's gonna be unveiled tomorrow as part of this assembly. And so, I wanted to also let you know that during the afternoon tomorrow on the CNBC Network, Ferndale High School is gonna be on TV. So, starting at about 1:30 is what I was told. So, what you need to do is just turn on your TV on CNBC tomorrow, and just tune in and listen and watch, and our kids are gonna be on. So, that's gonna be some great national exposure for our kids. I'm really looking forward to having that.
Great.
Okay. Secondly, this week, another big event is Wednesday night, our kindergarten open house. It's at Roosevelt Elementary at 6 o'clock, Wednesday night, and it's for any incoming kindergarteners to come and check out Roosevelt, and meet the teachers, meet the principal there. It's a kid-friendly event, bring your kids, and there's gonna be lots of information available there about what it's like to be in kindergarten. And there's gonna be some kids, some older kids there, too, to talk about their experience in Ferndale Schools, so you can get a taste of what it'll be like for, you know, your K-12 experience. So, that's happening Wednesday. And then, of course, Saturday is our all-city concert, and that's an all-day event. It happens every year about this time of year. It will start at 11, it ends at 5. Choir, orchestra, and band will all be performing. I think, I wanna say choir is at 11, the band is at 1:30, and the orchestra is at 4 o'clock. And that's in the gym, the Ferndale High School gym, and you can come and you can see all of the kids right from 5th grade all the way up through 12th grade, and they perform, and it's a, it is a sight to see. The whole gym floor is filled with musicians, and you can see the progression of the kids as they learn, you know, as beginners, all the way up to our 12th grade musicians. And it's a really great event for anybody who would like to come and get a taste of what it's like at Ferndale Schools. So, that's what's going on this week, and I also wanted to take the opportunity to introduce you to our new school board member. This is Jackie Hart, and she was appointed just earlier this month. The board interviewed five candidates, and we appointed Jackie Hart to our position, left vacant by Raylon Leaks May, who's now on the city council. And so, I wanted to just give Jackie a chance to introduce herself, and so that you can meet her and welcome her to Ferndale.
Wonderful. Jackie, welcome.
Thank you. As everyone has heard, my name is Jackie Hart, and I have two children in the district. I have a 10th grader and a 6th grader, and I am a resident of Pleasant Ridge, and I've been in the district for about five years, and I look forward to getting to know all of you and working with all of you to make our schools even better, and to continue with the restructuring and all of the progress that's been made. So, thank you for having me tonight, and I look forward to getting to know more, each of you, a little bit better.
I look forward to working with you, too. Thanks.
Thank you.
And thanks for coming tonight and introducing yourself.
Welcome.
All right, that's all we have.
Thanks.
Any questions? Nope?
Very good.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, ladies. Thank you. Our next presentation is the Ferndale Area District Library, and Adam is here, trustee Adam is from the library. He always has the nicest PowerPoints, too, so...
So, at night I'm Batman, but during the day I'm an engineer, so all my files, type file, the date, numerically. All right.
So, if you're an engineer, you can appreciate the new podium.
And this is great. I actually was expecting to do it myself, a touchscreen, a holographic interface and everything.
Yeah.
So, the library is in the middle of an early literacy program right now. It goes through February 10th, and during this time, there'll be a Tree Bud Storytime. This is for the little ones, the 0 to 18-month-olds. At 2:00 PM on Tuesdays, a Tree Sprouts, this is the 18 to 4-year-olds. 10:30 on Wednesdays. And a Family Storytime on the 8th of February, where everyone can come and enjoy a nice story together. And for anyone who's interested, preschools and daycares, the library offers services they're calling branching out. They can drop off a collection of books about a specific subject. They can arrange a storytime just for your group at your facility, so, and there's some other things, too. So, contact the library, and they can, you know, tell you some of the details and work something out. Special events, we have, you can come and learn this Alexander Technique. This is a way to fix your posture, to fix your pain and stress. It'll be 7:00 PM on the 29th. The spaces do fill up, so do call ahead and register beforehand. And a fun craft, you can come make blankets for dogs. No sewing is necessary. You can come make a blanket for a sheltered dog, and one for a pet you know and love to take home. And then, I don't have slides on this, the library also is doing a pilot program with T-Mobile, offering free Wi-Fi hotspots, which you can borrow for a week at a time. And the, you know, the envisioning is that if you need to borrow one because you're going on a trip, and you don't expect to have Wi-Fi access, this is a way you can, you know, ensure that you'll have it. Or, if you feel like, you know what, I need to save a little bit of money, get rid of my cable, get rid of the internet, I can use one of these for a week while I look for jobs. They are for ages 18 and up, and available at the circulation desk.
Excellent.
And that's all I got. Thank you, Ferndale.
Any questions for Adam? I heard, I saw that you had a very successful adult coloring event.
Yeah, that was a big deal.
I knew that was a thing, but it is, right?
I suspect there'll be more in the future.
That's what I was gonna say. Is it gonna, you're gonna do that again now?
Coloring and cocoa, it was.
And cocoa. Awesome.
Everyone loves crafts. You can come, I don't know if it'll be cocoa, but, and there's no drinking, there's no alcohol, no alcohol, I bet we're just allowed in the library nowadays, but you can come make a blanket for dogs, and then go get cocoa with alcohol in it later.
There you go. Thank you.
I do have a question, Adam.
Oh, yes.
Regarding the blankets for dogs, so, participants don't need any supplies? It's all provided by the library?
All provided by the library, and no needles necessary. You'll use some scissors to, if you've ever made one of the fleece blankets, then also fleece blankets, you cut little strips and tie them together, and eventually end up with something, you know, usually bi-colored, and pretty neat.
Thank you. Cool. Thanks, Adam. Next presentation is the Downtown Development Authority, and Barry Hicks, the executive director, is here with us this evening.
Evening, mayor and council. So, I have a couple of things I'm gonna promote this evening. Apparently, people do like to color, though, but the one I was more familiar with was actually coloring with paint and drinking wine downtown, so, that is an adult thing. But, one of the events that's coming up I wanted to promote was the 15th Annual, and I know it's probably tough for you to see it from there, it's the only flyer I had, the 15th Annual Ferndale Blues and Music Festival, coming up from January 29th through February 6th. It'll be at over 10 different places around downtown Ferndale, feature dozens of different music acts, and have other live events going on. So, I encourage you to come down and check that out one of those nights. If you need more information about it, and if you couldn't read this on TV or anything, go to www.ferndalebluesfestival.org for more information to get the schedule of events.
Also, I was just gonna say, if it's not already running on our cable, could we, Marnie or April, could we make sure we maybe promote that there?
Yeah, and I think we've posted that on the DDA Facebook page, too, and on our website as well. You can get it from downtownferndale.com. Also, coming up, I wanna invite you to attend, and the public as well, to come to the DDA's annual planning meetings. Those are coming up this week, on Thursday, the 28th, at 5:30 PM. It is an open meeting. We'll be taking input from people, what your vision is for downtown Ferndale, and set some goals for 2016. That will be at the Kulick Center. And then, on the following Thursday, February 4th, at 5:30 PM, we will be doing a second session, which will recap the things we talked about in the first session, and present kind of a plan going forward, and that will be held at the library. So, those are the things that are coming up from the DDA.
Any questions for Barry? Appreciate it. Thanks. Our next presentation is a quarterly park update, and Lloyd, that's you, correct?
Mr. Mayor and council, when I was last before you at the first update, I had indicated by the end of the year we would accomplish several projects. I'm pleased to report that what I had told council, reported to council, would be complete, is complete. That includes the solar access panel for the dog park, the American in Bloom Fair Park renovations, which turned out to be a very difficult project, but I think, as the grant title implies, when spring comes and we're in bloom, I think the many thousands of dollars and hundreds of hours of labor that are put into the park will be evident by the blooms at that time. And I understand that the grant does require some sort of a recommitment or rededication ceremony, so we'll be looking forward to inviting council to that. In addition to that, I reported that we would replace the park signs at Garbert, Oppenheim, Marie Fair, and Vester. We've done that. We have removed the hockey rink at Wilson Park. What the pavement that's remaining will be used for has not been determined, but although it is certainly on the commission's agenda. Also, since last reporting to you, our park and rec director was successful in obtaining two grants, which has already been mentioned to council. And the work that was completed at Marie Totlot included a new play structure, the repair of the remaining play structures, creation of earth playmounds, tree trimming of the canopy, ADA compliance, extension of sidewalk, safety zone, and new park sign, and installation of a fence separating the Totlot area from traffic, which was just a few feet away. What we're planning, or the park and rec commission instructed at their last meeting, is at this point, they would like to take a pause and get the latest information that will come out of the master land use plan, so that they can make some more up-to-date decisions based upon the information that may be forthcoming. In addition to that, the city, as you're aware, is in the midst of their budget, and so there may be additional funding or some priorities that may be placed on projects that also come out of that master land use plan that will affect the commission's recommendations to council. And the one hot item that they instructed us to complete is we will review the remaining park play structures, and come back to council with recommendation to replace them as soon as possible. So, that's what we'll be moving on between now and when the weather will permit those installation, and we look forward to continued park improvements. Any questions?
Any questions for Lloyd?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate the update. It's not on our presentations, but I see our state representative is here, and when he's able to come and join us, we'd like to give him a few minutes on the agenda to just tell us all of the, I'd say, good things going on, but that's maybe not the right word, but what's going on in Lansing?
Yeah, exactly. I don't know if I could, I'm not here necessarily for good news. I wish, I wish that was the case.
Greg, Adam, welcome.
Although you have new glasses, it looks like, so that looks like good news.
I do.
Looks great.
Thanks for noticing.
Yeah, absolutely. And also to congratulate council member Leaks May.
Thank you.
Congratulations. I don't think I've seen you since you've been sworn in, but I know you're gonna do an amazing job. I know how dedicated you are to the community. I see you at events all the time. You're such an asset to this community, so I wanna congratulate you and wish you all the best.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
That's for sure. So, well, one thing I do, another thing to commend you on, and again, Ferndale is, you know, the city government here is doing wonderful things. The family leave policy that I saw, that's so exciting, and I'm so, so happy to see that. I'm happy to brag about that to my colleagues, and just keep up the good work here. So, I know that was something I kinda knew a little bit behind the scenes of what was going on, and I'm so excited that that was the case. So, congrats to that. Yes, I wish I had good news to share based on what's going on in Lansing, but I'm sure as everyone is following what's going on in the news with everything with DPS and Flint, it's just one bad thing after another, and a lot of failed leadership is what we're seeing. I was actually in Flint on Saturday. I was volunteering, handing out water, testing kits, and filters to the families there, and it's just a tragic situation. And the good thing, the people there were just so, they were so thankful, they were so appreciative of everything we're doing, they seemed very positive for what situation they were dealt with. You know, obviously, it wasn't their decision, but yet they're the ones that have to deal with this. So, I encourage people to go out there. I volunteered with the Red Cross with a lot, you know, a bunch of my colleagues. If you can't make it there physically, and you're able to donate online, do so as well. They are in dire need, that's for sure. You know, I won't get into the politics of everything and lay in blame, but I would just, one of the things I was really, really sad, saddened by is the slow reaction by our governor and our state, that it took them that long to actually do anything. When I had colleagues, you know, my colleague from Flint, the state rep from Flint, sent a letter at the beginning of 2015, and he might have sent something in 2014, I don't remember specifically, but there was a letter in January of 2015 urging the governor to do something, to help, and it was just blown off. And then, you hear, you know, some of the governor's staff kinda laughing that they sent the letter to the wrong department, which wasn't the case. They actually sent it, and in an article the following day, one of the governor staffers addressed the fact that they did receive that letter, and now they're looking back and saying that they didn't know about it. So, don't wanna get too much into that, but it is really sad. Some of the other things that happened after...
I will just tell you, and if you stick around for a couple of minutes, you're gonna hear, we have a group in Ferndale, most of them are sitting right over here, and we're gonna do a proclamation for them in a little while, that are also helping in these efforts of getting water up to Flint. So, we've got a local homegrown effort here as well, so...
I'm really happy to hear that, and I'd love to chat with you on that, because I'm gonna go back and volunteer again, so I can take a trip and bring stuff up with me. I'd love to do that.
Do you have a truck?
Coordinate. Yeah, we need a U-Haul, right?
We need trucks!
So, I assume that's a good thing, because there's a lot of water being donated.
That's right.
I'm really excited to hear that. When we worked with the Red Cross, they had numerous, you know, numerous U-Hauls and vans that we were, you know, we were working out of. So, I guess it's the fact of getting it up there that's important. So, maybe we'll talk and see what we can do to brainstorm and work on that. But, so, some of the bills that passed before the end of the year, those that you are following, you know, Senate Bill 571, which became a public act, and I don't know offhand, you guys might know what it became, the public act.
P. S. 269.
Okay. So, in essence, it's a gag order for our local governments, and we're in the midst of one now in a lot of the communities. Do we have anything here for March, other than the primary?
No.
Okay.
We do not for March.
So, there's some other communities, though, that, in essence, they're silencing, you know, the local governments. And this originally was a bill of about 13 pages that wasn't really controversial, there weren't really many issues with it, and then, just 10 minutes before we were ready to vote on it, it became a 53-page bill, or, you know, roughly that number. And they put this in there, and then there were some other things with campaign finance reform, which makes it even, you know, like, will add more money into the political system, which I don't think anyone really thinks that we need to, you know, spend more money in our political system here, and in candidates, and everything else. And it was just a really, really terrible bill that they pushed through, and you even had a lot of Republicans saying, after the fact, you know, they voted on it, and then they went outside, and there were lobbyists outside and said, "You know what you just voted on?" And they said, "Yeah, I think so." And they told them, they said, "No, I didn't know that." And you had a lot of Republicans, all the Democrats voted against it, obviously, I voted against it, and Republicans who are heard now saying they didn't know what was in it, and, you know, they want to try to repeal part of it, which is mind-boggling to me that they're just gonna vote without reading a bill. You know, I didn't have a chance to read it, because it was 10 minutes before, so I voted no. I said, you know, "This is wrong. We shouldn't even be voting on this. Let's have a chance to research this. If we're, you know, voting on policy that's gonna impact the state of Michigan and all its residents, why are we gonna take 10 minutes to do this and push it through?" So, that was really unfortunate. I know, I think some of you might have been there. Sandra Levin, Congressman Levin, had an event with a lot of the local elected officials there.
The city manager was there. We actually passed a resolution in opposition to that as well, yeah.
Great. Great. So, you know where I stand on this, and I will work with you.
No doubt.
And talking to some of my colleagues. There are some bills that are introduced, one on the House side, one on the Senate side. I think, I don't know that either of them repeals the entire bill, at least on the House side. I think my colleague introduced a bill that would repeal at least the gag order to start with. But you have that in addition to Senate Bill 13, which was the elimination of straight party voting, and that whole process was a mess, if anyone was following. So, originally, it came out of the House, and they were gonna eliminate straight party voting, but they were gonna tie it to no reason absentee voting. In essence, it wasn't really no reason absentee voting, it was kinda early voting, because no reason absentee would be you just send a form in, and they send you the ballot. This, you actually have to go in, in person, show your ID, but it was still better. It wasn't good, but it was better, and so, it passed with those tie bars. And then, it went to the Senate, and same kinda thing happened over there. What they did, the senators get to sit on the floor with a staff member who helps them as they go through all the bills that are coming through, and they ended up closing the Senate floor, sending all their staffers out, and they put, you know, it's just all the senators were sitting there by themselves, and it's very ironic. So, you know, they tell people that, you know, they want you, they don't want you to vote straight party, you know, straight ticket voting, they want you to kinda look at and evaluate everything independently. And what they did that night is there were, I don't know the exact amount, there were probably between like 15 or 20 amendments that the Democrats were offering up, and to make it move faster, the Republicans put them all together and voted on them, in essence, like straight party voting. So, they said, "Oh, because we wanna get through this quickly, we're just gonna put these all together, and we're gonna vote on them. Instead of doing it one by one, we're gonna vote on it all together." So, it's good enough for them to do, but not for the citizens of Michigan. So, a lot of frustrating stuff going on in Lansing, and when you combine both those bills, and one thing that they tried to say is that they wanted people to be educated on the candidates, and that's why they don't want straight party, they want you to, you know, to evaluate and look at it, yet then they turn around and, you know, do Senate Bill 571, which then you're not allowed to educate people on issues. So, it boggles my mind. Believe me, I'm there, you know, wanting to hit my head against the wall with a lot of the stuff that's happening there. So, those are a few of the bills. I wish I had better news to report to you about what's going on, but those are things that obviously I'm mindful of, and we're trying to do what we can to repeal and work on that. And it's, again, unfortunately, working in the minority, I'm at the will of the majority party. We can make our voices heard, and I can try the best I can, which I have been doing, to lobby my colleagues, you know, and the people on the other side of the aisle, to have them hopefully see, you know, how this is gonna negatively impact people in the state of Michigan. And one other thing with the straight party voting, in committee, I was watching, I'm not on the committee, but I was watching, and there's, you know, a study that says that the average wait time here in the state of Michigan is 22 minutes to vote. And so, you had these, I'll be careful how I phrase this, there are these guys from, you know, out states who said that they walk up, and they vote, there's never a line for them to vote. And so, we're saying, "Okay, well, for every one of you, then there's someone that's gonna have to wait 44 minutes."
Right.
For every time that you guys can walk up. And this obviously disproportionately affects urban areas, and so, this is, again, these people, I'll stop there. So, that's what's been going on.
We feel your pain.
Yeah, exactly. Hopefully, yeah. So, that's a little bit about what's going on. Upcoming, I do have a coffee hour coming up here in Ferndale, and so, just wanna let people know about that. It is, it will be held February 8th, which is a Monday, from 10:30 to noon at the library. So, that's what I was referring to earlier. So, hope to see people there. We will have a few other ones. I don't have them with me now, but we usually wanna do one in the morning and one in the evening, so that people, depending on their work schedule, can come during the day or come in the evening. But encourage you to sign up for my newsletter if you haven't done so already. If you email me at robertwittenberg@house.mi.gov, and let me know that you wanna be on the newsletter, or you can go on our website, which is wittenberg.housedemms.com, or you can call 517-373-0478. And then, for, if you want to be updated on what's going on, if you have a question, if you have a concern, if there's something we can help you with, with the state government, we've had some people reach out to us, and we've been able to help some people with some issues getting addressed here. So, whatever I can do, however I can help, I'm always here. Please reach out to me.
That's great.
So, that's really it. I don't know if any of you have any questions, or anything else?
Thank you.
No, keep up the good work.
Yeah, I'm trying. It's good to know that I have some, some sane people here, some progressive people here. Well, one other thing, actually, I forgot. I'm proud to say this, that they ranked members of the House based on votes that we cast on 50 different votes, and I was ranked as the most liberal member of the House. So, I'm actually proud to wear that badge. Thank you. So, you know, and they asked me, like, "Is that bad?" that badge. Thank you. So, you know, and they asked me, like, "Is that bad?" I said, "No." I mean, this is, you know, I vote my district. You know, I vote based on what's best for my district. And I'm also still able to get some things done. I actually do have a bill that passed the House already, and I have another bill that's going to be on the House floor this week. So, I'm still able to, you know, forge these relationships and get some things done, and not alienate myself. But I vote what's best for the district. You know, that's what I was elected to do. So, I'm proud to say that, more than anything, just proud to represent this district, because we are such a progressive district here. So, and thank you all. And again, reach out to me if you ever need anything.
Thank you. Thanks, thanks for coming by. Appreciate it. All right, our next item of business is called the audience. This is your opportunity, for those of you who are here with us in the audience, to speak to council on any item that's not on the agenda, because you'll get a chance to speak to that when we get to that portion of the agenda. So, come on up, give us your name, your address, and three minutes is yours. Good evening.
Good evening. Hi, my name's Julia Music. My address is 436 Silman, Ferndale. I want to talk to you guys about two things today. The first one is Ferndale Mardi Bras, which is coming up February 9th, from 6 o'clock to 9 o'clock at The WAB. I'm sorry, at The Loving Touch. I just messed that up. Is it The Loving Touch? Promise. What we do at Mardi Bras is we collect underwear, tampons, maxi pads, bras, menstrual cups, wipes, anything that can be used by women who are in shelters or on the streets. And then, we package all these items up, and we make sure they get to all the women in need in Oakland, Wayne, and possibly also Macomb County this year. We have lots of charities that are going to be receiving all these items. And the party itself is a great time at Loving Touch. We have drinks on sale that night, Hurricanes, where we'll get a dollar back for every drink. We'll have a big auction, and we're still looking for auction items, if anyone has anything they want to donate. And then, of course, we'll be collecting all the items. And we have our Ferndale High School students coming to volunteer to move the items for us, and it's a lot of stuff. So, we're really happy to have them. We also have Ferndale High School volunteers volunteering at the front door to check everyone in this year. So, that's super helpful as well. And I want to do some thank yous real quick. Thank you to Chris and Christina Johnson of The WAB, the Emery and Loving Touch, for providing space for us without even a second hesitation to think about it. And also, Councilman Martin, who's not here today, thank you. He supported us financially and backed the entire event. So, we really appreciated that as well. So, if you want to donate auction items, or you want to know more about the event, go to Ferndale Mardi Bras 2016 on Facebook. That's where you can find the information. The other thing I want to talk to you guys about, not surprisingly, is Ferndale Pride, right? Okay, so Ferndale Pride 2016 is well underway for its planning. It will be on June 4th this year again, so we're back in June.
Back in June.
Back in June. Calendar shifted us all the way back. Right now, if you go on our website, you can sign up to sponsor, to become a vendor, or to perform at the event. And soon, we'll have volunteer opportunities up as well. But right now, all that's ready to go. Our website is www.ferndalepride.com.
Excellent.
Do you guys have any questions about Mardi Bras or Pride? No? Okay, good. Hope to see you both.
Anyone else like to address council this evening?
So, from Ferndale to Flint is technically on the agenda, but I wasn't sure if it was going to be addressed.
Go for it. Go for it now. This would be a totally appropriate time.
Great. I'm glad that I'm totally appropriate. I wish I could say the same for the governor, but at least one of us is. So, my name is Liz Lamasti. I live on 458 La Prairie. And I've been in touch with Pastor Bobby from the Mission of Hope. He's the one who's been doing a lot of the efforts in Flint since early 2014, for a little less than a month now. And so, some friends of mine, who are over there, and I, were organizing on our own to sort of bring water and also advocacy and attention to a lot of the issues going on in Flint. And as our developments were getting larger in scale, I thought, we've got a lot of community organizations and individual people, but what we're really not seeing is a vocal commitment from cities, saying that, as a community, we're going to stand in solidarity, whether that's the expressive commitment, or also the water, the resources, the community organizing. And so, last Sunday, I got on Facebook, talked to Michael and a couple of others, and a half an hour later, all of a sudden, there's like 50 messages in my inbox, and everyone wants to do something. I think I messaged you, Mayor Coulter, and two minutes later, there was a response, same with you, Councilwoman Piana. And so, I think it's a beautiful testament to, you know, what we can hopefully show other communities in the state, that this is of a severity that we would never want it in our House. Why would we wish that on anybody else? And if we're not going to get the large-scale institutional support as quickly as necessary, we can at least do something in the meantime, as Representative Wittenberg mentioned. So, what my objective is here today is hopefully that council will approve the resolution, supporting our efforts from Ferndale to Flint, but also that we open the door to have broader conversations about how other ways the city can provide other resources to this effort, how other businesses and community organizations can contribute, and how we can think about a sustained commitment, because unfortunately, I think it's self-evident that this issue isn't going away anytime soon. And we also need to start thinking about the water access issues that are happening to us just south of Eight Mile, which we haven't even really gotten into either. So, it's a deplorable event that shouldn't have happened in the first place. I think we all can agree on that. But I think that we can be a powerful sign of positivity and an example for others to follow, and feel empowered to participate in something meaningful and positive. With that, I would like to turn it to Darren from Level One Bank, who is one of our staunchest business supporters.
Yes. So, I'm here just to speak about the current logistics of what we're trying to do with the raising of water donations and also monetary donations. So, at Level One Bank, each of our 10 locations around Metro Detroit will be able to accept monetary donations on the public's behalf. And all of that donation, donated money will be reconciled by our accounting department. With that, each donation that we receive will either be purchased water, or sent to nonprofits that are assisting with the Flint crisis. Additionally, each of our locations are also working on the prospect of accepting water donations. Currently, just the Level One Bank in Detroit on Washington Boulevard and the location here in Ferndale are accepting water donations. We also need plenty of trucks. So, if you guys know of any semi-trucks or companies that can assist with that, and volunteers, we could definitely use help on the weekends to get the materials from here up to Flint.
And the final thing I'll say for closing is, water is but one of many immediate needs for this community. I think another horrendous development is that the water shut-offs are starting to continue in Flint. There was a brief moratorium that we have a lot of residents in Flint who are facing shut-offs. And I think in addition to the dignitary offense of being asked to pay for poison, which is terrible in its own right, practically speaking, we're asking for bursted pipes, or an inability to flush your toilet, or all of these other basic aspects of daily living. And so, we have a petition effort out. If you'd like to sign it, I can share it with you to bring attention. It's got almost 10,000 signatures, and my sister has gotten some national attention. So, you know, any support there would be appreciated. But also, we're working with a community development group in Flint, who's trying to raise money to help people pay off their water bills. And we're talking in the hundreds per month. Flint is one of the worst offenders in terms of overly outrageous fees for a monthly water balance. So, that's another issue that we're taking really seriously, too. So, if anyone has interest in that or wants more information, please don't hesitate to ask. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, uh, city manager, did we not make available a site, Kulik Center?
Yes, during open hours.
Is also another drop-off site. So, if folks want to drop off Level One Bank, also the Kulik Center, I think there's some other ones as well. I don't know all of them.
Embrew.
Embrew, that's right.
And Ferndale Schools. Ferndale Schools, the students are participating as well.
Oh, okay. And Renaissance Vineyard Church, yes. Awesome. Wonderful. Great job, you guys. Anyone else?
Speedy Auto.
Speedy Auto on Eight Mile? Okay, want to make sure we get all of them out. Okay, great. Anyone else like to address council? We are going to take up that proclamation in just a moment at the consent agenda, but if anyone else would like to address council this evening. All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. We vote for the entire consent agenda in one motion, unless council pulls something from the consent agenda. So, let me read that for you now. Item A is the approval of the minutes of the regular and special meeting held January 11th, 2016. Item B is the adoption of a resolution authorizing the council members Leaks May, Martin, and Piana to attend the Michigan Municipal League's Capitol Conference on March 22nd and 23rd, 2016, in Lansing, Michigan. C is the adoption of a resolution authorizing council member Leaks May to attend the Michigan Municipal League's Elected Officials' Core Weekender Seminar on February 26th and 27th in Frankenmuth. D is the adoption of a resolution recognizing the David A. Lennon Foundation as a nonprofit organization operating in the city of Ferndale. Item E is the adoption of a resolution of support for the Ferndale to Flint Group, as submitted by the mayor, and I'll read that in a moment. Item F is the adoption of the proclamation proclaiming May 29, 2015, as Arbor Day in the city of Ferndale. Item G is the approval to fill the Community and Economic Development Director position, as submitted by our HR director. Item H is the approval to purchase two 2016 Ford F-250 pickups with plows, and one 2016 F-250 truck with utility box from Gorno Ford of Woodhaven, for a total of $117,722 to be charged to the General Fund Vehicle Purchase Account. Item I is the approval of the city's 2016 community membership in the Traffic Improvement Association, and to charge the expense of $6,000 to the Major Streets Fund Membership and Dues Account. Item J is the approval of the data recall invoice in the amount of $6,670.57 for digitizing city clerk records to be charged to the Capital Outlay Account. Item K is the approval to purchase one Power Edge R730 server from Vision Networking Solutions in the amount of $18,904.90, with $15,000 of that amount to be charged to the account listed in your agenda, and $3,904.90 to be charged to the other account listed in your agenda, as submitted by our Assistant City Manager. And finally, the approval of the bills and payroll is submitted by the City Manager's Office, subject to review by the Council Finance Committee. What is council's pleasure on the consent agenda this evening?
Make a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
I support.
See? Too slow. Moved by Pollock and supported by Piana. Any discussion? And let me start out by indeed reading the proclamation that I mentioned earlier, and then I'll give this to you guys for you to use in your works. So, "At a regular city meeting of the City Council of the City of Ferndale, Oakland County, Michigan, held in the council chambers on the 25th of January 2016, Mayor David Coulter, on behalf of the Ferndale City Council, extends the city's support to the volunteer community group from Ferndale to Flint for its efforts in supporting, creating, awareness for, and supplying fresh water and other necessary resources to the community and people of the city of Flint during the ongoing water crisis. The Flint water crisis is a tragedy that no one should have to suffer through. The city of Ferndale stands with, from Ferndale to Flint, and the work its members, Ferndale residents, are undertaking to support and assist the community and people of Flint." And let me just say personally, I'm so proud of you guys for doing this. It's such a Ferndale thing to do, although, obviously, you know, people from across the country have been mobilized by this tragedy. But I'm very proud that we have people in our community that have taken upon themselves to help organize this. I'm happy that the city is able to lend its help where we can, and whatever else we can do, don't hesitate to message me again on Facebook or any of us for whatever else we can do. I don't know if anyone else would like. So, for that, let me, I don't know who wants to come up and receive it. Liz? Yeah. Any other discussion on the consent agenda? All right, if not, Marnie, would you call the role, please?
Councilmembers Pollock.
Yes.
Piana.
Yes.
Leaks May.
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. The consent agenda is adopted. Moving on now to the regular agenda. Item A is a confirmation to appoint Andrea Rosenfeld to the Arts and Cultural Commission for a term ending December 31st, 2017. I don't know if Andrea is here.
She was not able to make it.
She's not able to make it here, okay. Do you want to introduce that item?
Yes. We've received Ms. Rosenfeld's application for the Ferndale Arts and Cultural Commission. It's in your package. She is extremely highly qualified for the position, and we recommend her appointment.
I mean, University of Michigan School of Art and Design, that's pretty qualified. Fine arts degree, fashion degree from the Fashion Institute of Technology. I think she's going to be a great member of the Arts and Cultural Commission. I'm happy to put her forward. Is there a motion to accept that nomination, to that appointment?
I move to confirm the appointment of Andrea Rosen-
I have to make it first.
I move to confirm the appointment of Andrea Rosenfeld to the Arts and Cultural Commission for a term ending December 31st, 2007. Help me to pull Mayor Protem Piana.
Moved by Pollock, supported by Leaks May. Is there any discussion on that item? All right, if not, Marnie, would you call the role, please?
Councilmembers Piana.
Yes.
Leaks May.
Yes.
Pollock.
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter.
Yes, thank you. That appointment is adopted. Finally, regular item, regular agenda, item B is a discussion of the Handicap Parking Administration. And Joe, our Assistant City Manager, is going to introduce that item.
Yes. Mayor, City Council, give me one moment.
Sure. You recall that at the last meeting, Councilman Pollock, I think you asked our staff to gather some facts around our handicap parking policies here and make recommendations or presentations to us?
That is correct. We actually had a resident come and make a statement about their dissatisfaction with having to pay for parking now in the handicap spaces. And that is not the only resident that has approached me and made comment. And it was also discussed a bit on social media. And so, I really wanted the city to investigate this and present why we have decided to do this. And I have to say, in the last two weeks, I have learned more about disability parking than I have my whole entire life.
It's the nature being on council.
It is, it is.
Yeah. You missed the chicken ordinance, but you've made up for it with handicap parking. Joe, you want to give us a recap of the policy and what we're up to?
Yeah, so as mentioned, I thought it would be most helpful for the public and council to be presented with a general background with the state's regulations and requirements as it concerns disabled parking policy. So, real quick overview, I provided just a snapshot statement of what the state Secretary of State defines as qualifications that you would have to meet in order to receive one of their handicap or disabled parking placards or plates. The state does have three distinct classifications that are different from each other for various types of placards or plates. And that generally, for two of those three, the placards or plates do not exempt the driver or user from paying metered parking, if a city has metered parking. So, I thought it'd be helpful to go over them point by point in the beginning. So, the first classification is a temporary classification. The state acknowledges the temporary by assigning it the red-white color. Temporary does have a term between one to six months. So, if you still had this passed for six months, you would be exceeding the useful life of the placard. So, you will be subject to enforcement at that point. And there are some requirements of support that you would need to have to get one of these. And that's consistent for all three placards. And that would be a statement from a physician or chiropractor to just determine or identify why you would need this. The second placard would be for what would be considered permanent disability. This would have a lifetime of four years before it would have to be renewed on your birthday. It is blue and white in pattern. But again, just like the previous pass, this is not exempt user from paying for metered parking, but it does provide you with the most accessible parking, which is the purpose of the handicap or disabled parking policy. The third, we pulled an example, it's a copy example, couldn't find one online. But there's a yellow sticker, if you can see, pointed out right here, that would be assigned to your placard. And if you do receive this yellow sticker, you are eligible for an exemption from parking. And that would be in any parking space within the city's paid system, not just disabled parking spaces, but any space. There's a list of proofs you would have to meet in order to obtain this from the state. I did list those in the presentation. In terms of disability plates, there are a couple different rules. The plate generally extends to anyone driving in the vehicle with you. So, that would pass to your passenger as well. There are some different rules there. But again, the plate doesn't exempt the user or anyone driving the vehicle from paying for metered parking. So, we went ahead and we researched some other municipal parking enforcement policies, because we do recognize that there's some questions about this policy. And we did find with the peer group listed right there, that for the most part, and generally, the regular rate is consistent as far as an approach to enforcing disabled permit policy. And the reason is, the primary objective is, we want to ensure that these spaces- And the reason is, the primary objective is, we want to ensure that these spaces are accessible primarily to those who need it. That is, that is the number one objective when it comes to providing these disabled parking spaces, is to accommodate proximity and convenience. And to do so, by enforcing these spaces and applying the same rules as other meter parking spaces, it removes the incentive to obtain free parking sessions by those who may not need the placards. And so we, you might question why we would reestablish this. The city did enforce disabled parking spaces in the past. This was discontinued when there was a system changeover as part of the Pay Station project in 2013. I think that some of those spaces just didn't get included in reassigning space numbers to all the spaces. But the primary purpose is that there were several instances of fraudulent use witnessed by our parking enforcement officers, as well as members of the police department over the years, that had made comments about frustration of watching fraudulent use and not being able to have an enforcement mechanism. And I would like to note that since we put this in place, 25% of the citations issued were from invalid use of disabled parking passes. So we have prevented 25% of those people from accessing and using these spaces and preventing the use from the people who truly need it, which again, goes back to our primary objective of why we would take this approach. We did reach out to the Disability Network of Oakland and Macomb County, and they did issue an official statement that they do choose, it's an organization, to advocate the state's approach, this approach to enforcing disabled parking. They do find that the policies and procedures for addressing free parking in Michigan are considered reasonable and consistent with the spirit of law and ADA. However, we do have a recommendation of how we can, how we might be able to improve the experience for those with permits who do need to use them. Because we added these back in, we would recommend, and we believe we can do this, is reinstall Duncan meters and paint them blue so they're specifically called out for these spaces. That does provide people with a convenient option of still dropping in the coin, but we also provide the flexibility. We can include the four space digit number on those Duncan meters, and that could also allow for the convenience of the pay station, which does provide flexible cash, credit card, and coin payment. So they, they have many forms of payment, and we believe that this could be a more flexible and accommodating platform for these spaces. And that would be our recommendation, as well as continuing the current policy being consistent with the state standards. Are there any questions about?
No questions for Jill.
Policy.
Comments?
Would the Duncan meters, would the, I mean, you said it'd be coin accessible, which is great, but as far as the time limit on them, would it still be consistent to all the parking meters throughout the city, or would these people get, have to keep coming back out and?
It would be consistent. It's a mechanical meter, so it would have the same settings as the other Duncan meters that are still in place in the on-street, so from a time restraint, it would, it would be consistent with that. So it wouldn't be for all-day parking.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
I like Michigan's policy, and some of the research I did on my own says that Michigan's two-tiered system of having, taking different counts of disability is a good one, because it helps reduce fraud with the handicap place cards or placards. And so, I don't know, that's what my research has concluded, and so Michigan and Illinois are some of the leading states using this type of system. I don't know if that's the case or not, but that's what I found. Can you talk a little about the Duncan meters? One of the reasons we went to the pay stations was that the meters were old and outdated, and the parts weren't manufactured anymore, so I was wondering how many meters we have on hand and how many meters will be replaced for the handicap places?
Well, we still have a considerable volume of older meters that are...
Yes, I know.
Just sitting in storage. There's not a lot of useful life or useful value for them anymore, but in this case, this is something that could ease the burden of re-establishing this policy by adding an element of familiarity. So we feel that the pay station is still flexible and still more accommodating, and is still the direction to go in terms of an overall paid system process, but in this case, we have, we have excess old mechanical meters to spare, and we think for now, it would be a good gap to reintroduce this.
And how many spaces are actually handicap spaces in our downtown that are metered?
Mr. Kevin Cairns? Roughly 30.
Okay, so will Republic Parking be responsible for collecting that coinage because that was part of changing over in the new system? I'm supportive of providing access to those who have trouble getting the meters, but I just want to understand what the operations is, because we got rid of them so that we wouldn't have to do that.
It would still be assimilated into our collection schedule, but yes, these would be the first reintroduction of any mechanical meters in the lot, so he would just have to consider that into his collection schedule.
Okay. And then, my other question is, is there any opportunity that we could dedicate any of the handicap space parking revenue to pay for services that improve accessibility and mobility in our downtown?
That would be a policy decision for council to consider.
Because there are some things that I read that I thought were interesting as solutions, that if you're going, you know, if people have issues with revenue coming in from handicap spaces, which helps with turnover of those spaces, you know, maybe we could look at safer sidewalks or curb ramps, which we already do, but maybe there is something that we could do more regularly with that money. But there's also something else that, a service, a mobility service that we don't do in our downtown that perhaps this revenue could help pay for is audible devices at pedestrian crosswalks for visually impaired. We don't have any of the BP crosswalks, so if we're about an accessible downtown, not only from the time you park, but for where you need to go in the downtown, so maybe we could use that revenue to help pay for services that improve accessibility and mobility. Is this an option, since we don't do that now?
I think it'd be a prudent recommendation. Again, I'd go back to the primary purpose of this, and that's accessibility for those who need it. Revenue, this isn't even considered a backstory as part of this discussion from an administrative perspective. It's our responsibility to try to ensure the spaces and to preserve the spirit of the law, so.
Okay, well, I would still like the city to look at...
We could look at...
How we can improve those investments outside of...
We could look back at some options and perhaps provide some recommendations during this budget process as to how to treat that with the auto parking.
My suspicion is this wouldn't be enough revenue to do it, so we...
I don't know.
Right, I mean, who knows?
I don't know how much revenue a handicap spot per day, if it's $100 a day, it could be $3,000 a day times 365 days, which is, turns out to be what? Do math, quick.
We can certainly do a quick study of the revenues that do come back and then look for some kind of recommendation during the budget process.
Other questions or comments?
I just want to thank Joe for taking the time to put all of this together and do the investigation, the legwork, and presenting it tonight. After last week's council meeting, Chief Collins was kind enough to approach me and start me off on my education trail when we were discussing why, you know, we started implementing it and letting me know that other communities are doing it as well. We're not the only ones. I was surprised at how little I knew about, how much I thought I knew and realized how little I knew about disability parking. And I was always under the assumption that, you know, if a plate has the disability, if it's a disability plate, that the vehicle is allowed to park in a disability space. And that's not true. It is the individual who has issued the disability tag or the plate, and that individual has to be in the car when you park. So many times, I've seen, you know, someone use, you know, Aunt Laura's car and, you know, they're very abled people parking in disabled spots. So it's, I'm glad that we've gone this route. You know, originally, I was very much against forcing people to have to pay at disability spots, but looking at the data and realizing what the state laws are, I'm very supportive of continuing the policy. One of my issues in communicating with Joe over the last couple of weeks was my concern for people who do have a disability to easily get to a meter or pay station, because not all the pay stations are close to the disabled parking spaces. And that's, Joe, when you came up with the idea of putting back in the Duncan meter, so I'm glad that you, you came up with that idea. And my concern though, now, is that they're still accessible to individuals who may be in a wheelchair, because a lot of these meters are up here, and if they're down below, you know, so maybe we have to think about also where we're putting them so that they're accessible, because not everybody who is in a wheelchair is going to have the yellow sticker parking, and they are going to be forced to have to pay. So I think we need to really think about not just putting them back where they originally were, right in front of the car, but making sure that they're accessible to the person getting out of the vehicle and where that space, you know, would be located. That's all I have.
I don't know if we need a motion, actually. I think this is just direct after...
It was just a discussion item in the presentation.
To do that, so it's just a discussion item, so.
I apologize for struggling to read up there. I'm struggling to read this, the first six slides, and I realized, oh wait, we have a screen right in front of me. Just not used to it, and then I was like, oh.
Any, any last comments or questions of Joe? Joe, thank you for doing the research and coming back with a very thorough response and recommendation. Appreciate it. All right, next item of business would be call to council. I see our police chief is here. Chief Collins, anything for the good of the community tonight?
Nothing directly from the police department. Your honor, I would like to sadly report that one of our retired auxiliary officers passed away, Bill Keating. He was a Ferndale resident. He was 10 years, was one of our auxiliaries, and he's been in hospice for the last couple of weeks, and he passed away Friday. Visitation is tomorrow at Spalding and Curtin after 5:00, and the honor guard will be standing. On a happier note, I guess, the chief in Madison Heights, the chief of police in Madison Heights, Anthony Roberts, is retiring. He's going to be replaced by Corey Haynes, our deputy chief, and we'll be, I'll be seeing him on Thursday morning, and we'll be saying goodbye. If anybody knew Anthony, he was a really good guy. He is a really good guy, and keeping him in the present tense, and he will be missed by Madison Heights PD, I'm sure, very much. So that's all I have this evening, thank you.
Thanks, appreciate it. Jill, anything from the recreation department this evening? Bless you.
All right, just a couple of quick announcements. Coming up next Friday, February 5th, is our annual sweetheart date night dance. This dance, we partner with Oak Park Recreation. It's held over at their community center from 7:00 to 9:00. We also partner with the WAB and the Emory. They offer a pre-dance dinner special for dads, uncles, grandpas, and their, their dates. The girls with their registration receipt get to eat for free. So that's next Friday, February 5th, and registration is available online at ferndalemi.gov. Despite the cold weather, we are thinking spring. We are currently registering for our youth soccer leagues and our adult softball leagues that start this spring, March and April. Registration is available for those as well on ferndalemi.gov. And lastly, we are now accepting applications for our summer camp counselor positions. Our camp, our summer camp is state-licensed. Applicants must be 18 years or older and have a minimum of four weeks of prior camp experience. And those postings are on our city website as well, ferndalemi.gov. Thank you.
Excellent, thanks. Jenny, anything from HR department this evening?
Just a couple of quick updates. Our office has been very busy with recruitment these last few months. A couple of open positions I want to make sure the public is aware of. We're still accepting applications for our customer service representative position. This is our front counter and a first point of contact that we have with our residents, a very, very important position within our community. In that position, we're accepting applications till February 1st. So you can visit our website at www.ferndalemi.gov and click on the human resources tab. Thank you.
Excellent, thanks. Derek, anything from the economic development department this evening?
Nothing.
Nothing, all right. Fire chief Sullivan, anything from the fire department for the good of the community?
Mr. Mayor, council, we just recently had a pretty bad house fire over the weekend in Royal Oak Township, and one of the things I'd like to kind of reiterate and tell people is closed doors. This fire started in a basement. A woman woke up at 6:55 in the morning. Her coat was on fire on the back of the door. A coat on fire on the back of the door. She tried to put it out, dropped to the ground, was getting burnt. She left the room with the door open, went down the hallway, up the stairs, opened the basement door, decided to go out the garage, opened the garage door, realized her uncle, 80-year-old uncle, was still on the upstairs, second floor of the house. Went up the second floor stairs, he came down, left the door to the upstairs open. They both went out the garage door, leaving it open and out to the street. This pretty much created a wood burning stove with a chimney down the center of the house, drawing the fire up to the first floor, the second floor, the attic, and both garages, breezeway, and the cars all burnt down. We had to bring in, the first time in my recent career, a big earth mover and knock the rest of the house in, so it made it safe for the neighborhood. If there's ever a fire in someone's house, you should exit immediately and close any doors or windows that you leave, and it prevents the fuel from getting oxygen. It could choke itself out, but it does buy time. Even if it only buys five or 10 minutes, it may buy us enough time to prevent losing a whole structure, much less having to bulldoze it in. So closing doors, they're there for fire protection and preventing smoke from crossing barriers. I would recommend smoke detectors inside a room, inside a hallway, inside any area that could potentially catch fire to warn you and keep everything closed at night. They're not there for privacy, they're there for your protection to stop a fire. And we can't reiterate that enough, because this could have changed the whole outcome of this fire had they just shut doors. So I know when people are scared and they're on their way out because there's a lot of fire behind you, that's pretty threatening, but the door will stop a lot of it from following you. And as you move through a building, you create what we call a flow path of oxygen and air, so we create a flow path when we open a door to go in and fight the fire. So currently, we send people in, we close the door on them. Looks a little bizarre, but it does protect them better till they get to the seat of the fire. So again, if you have doors that are available, shut them, exiting the building, and then call us immediately from a neighbor's house, because fire doubles in size about every 11 seconds, so you're not going to win inside the house and with a small extinguisher. Thank you.
Good reminder, thanks, chief. Kara, anything from the community engagement department this evening?
Oh, this is nice. Hello. It's the first time I've seen this, I know. Yeah, I just wanted to let everybody know that the newsletters are officially in and out for distribution, which is very exciting, so I wanted to offer a little bit of a sneak peek. Also, just kind of showcase, we have done a little bit more evolving of the redesign. So now there's a third page filled out that includes a list of important calendar items. And that page is meant to be cut right off and hung up on the fridge. It goes on the other side, so we've got three to four months of calendar items for people to be able to see when registrations are available, when city halls close, and other important dates like that. So this is obviously the first time we're rolling out the calendar feature. I would love for residents to let us know if they like it, let us know if there are dates that they would like to see on there that they're not currently seeing on there, anything like that. I would love for them to reach out to me. The other slightly different thing is that tucked inside this month's newsletter, we're going to have this wonderful map of all the new polling precinct locations with really good detail on the back. So that will be stuck inside with a little, little glue dot, so people can have all that information at their fingertips. The final change we're going to make, this is actually an addition, not a change, is because we have heard from people that they'd like this information online, we started an account with Issue, and we're going to upload every newsletter to Issue so they can flip right through, something we can share on all of our social media accounts and put up on our website. It will still go to all of the residents in Ferndale, and the PDFs will still be on the website for download, but this will just give an extra opportunity for people to be able to engage with the content if they want.
your water bill online at FerndaleMI.gov/water. We shortened it from all the extensive languages. And then there's also an update concerning if you want to pay by phone. The city has employed a new phone payment system. You would be able to call 24/7 at your convenience, and the phones are received by an attendant. And that new phone number is, drum roll, please keep it going. I wish it was 1-800-WATER, but that's the best we can do. But again, if you want to make a payment by phone, we advise you to call 866-873-9157. Your phone payment is processed in real time with our system, and yeah, but we, again, make payments online to FerndaleMI.gov/water.
Excellent. Thank you.
May I throw the-
Yes, sure.
A number of people, another, number of residents have asked me about why can't they get billed monthly? And, and I've answered that question. It's, it really is a cost thing. You know, it's easier for us to bill four bills a month or year than it is twelve. But people wanted to know if they can then pay monthly. And my understanding is there shouldn't be an issue if you go on and you want to apply fifty dollars a month to your bill. It's just going to, when you get your quarterly bill, it'll just show the payments that you've made. Am I correct in this?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, you could submit payments online or by phone, again, and you could have more or less accumulating negative balance, because you're cash-rich on your account. But we can't tabulate the bill outside of the quarterly billing cycle. So you're actually, what you could do is just go online, and if you pull up your account using the city's website, you can see a complete history of what you've used and what you've paid in the past, and that's a good way to go for judging what you would pay, if you want to get ahead. Thank you.
All right. Marnie, anything from the city clerk's office this evening?
Yeah, just wanted to announce that we did get our absentee ballots in. We're going to be mailing them out this week, so if you have sent in an application for an AV ballot, keep an eye on the mail. It should be arriving towards the end of the week. It's quite a process, because we have the two different ballots this time, so it's kind of like doing, instead of nine precincts, it's kind of like doing eighteen precincts and do them separately. So it's taken us a while to get them out, but they will be out this week, and if anybody needs an absentee ballot, they should contact the clerk's office. And I did just want to announce that Councilman Pollock had turned me on to a mailing that we could do for voters who are sixty and over to get on the permanent AV list. And as a result of the ones that we've sent out, we've sent out about 1,200 of them, and we've gotten around 200 back already. So we have really augmented the number of absentee voters, which should help a lot come November in the precincts.
Very soon.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. April, anything for the city manager's office?
I do have one. It's a friendly reminder to all of our residents that on February 6th at the Rust Belt from 11 to 3 is master land use plan, planning meeting, and it's all-day event from 11 to 3. You can come anytime and provide input, how you see the, and what you see the future of Ferndale looking like. There is an actual short presentation at 11:30 and 2, if you want to hear more. But other than that, just drop by at the Rust Belt from 11 to 3 to provide your input. And then, of course, for those that don't want to come out to Rust Belt, you can continue to follow Ferndale Exchange as well, to put in your input for this very, very important process that we're having in our, not only in our master land use, but plan, but also recreation and sustainability. So as much input as we can from our residents would be, would be helpful. And again, that is this February 6th, it's a Saturday, from 11 to 3 at the Rust Belt.
Very good. Dan, anything from the legal-
Just one item, just to bring the council's attention, the comment period regarding state agencies and the railroad regarding the city's intent to apply to the Federal Railroad Association, Administration for a quiet zone. That period runs next week. Those comments will be condensed and provided to council before the city actually proceeds forward with filing a application for the quiet zone.
Great. Thank you. Councilwoman Leach-May.
Let's see. First, you all heard that the Ferndale Music and Blues Festival is starting this weekend. There's a new venue that's going to be held at Cork for that, for the blues, for the Ferndale Music and Blues Festival. And I'm just happy to report that I am the volunteer from 9 to 11 at Cork, so come and be ready to fill those blue pigs and, and support this community. Also, another committee that I'm on, I'd like to have you all kind of just plug it into your calendars now, save the date, Thursday, April 24th, the Ferndale Education Foundation is having their annual dinner auction that supports our Ferndale schools and our teachers and the grants. And that will be Thursday, April 21st, and it's going to be held this year at the Magic Bag. So it's pretty cool. And the theme is the Grammy, so start, start thinking of what Grammy, Grammy artists that you want to be in, and then come out and support our schools. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Councilman Pollock.
I have nothing, your honor, but I think you missed Lloyd.
Oh, you know what? After that wonderful park I forgot the rest of DPW work. Lloyd, is there anything else from DPW? I apologize. There's always something.
Oh, my goodness.
It gets right over you.
I wanted council and the public to be aware.
I actually didn't recognize you in the suit and tie.
Blending into the blue.
Sorry about that.
You know, I just wanted to let council know and the public know that we have not given up on our attempt to establish an ice rink in Garment Park. The weather is not cooperating. The next few days look to be above freezing.
I'm not complaining about that.
So if we're going to, if we're going to be able to try that out this year, it's, it's going to take some below freezing temperatures, and so keep your fingers crossed, and further update will be coming.
Yeah, I got a huge response to that when I posted something on Facebook. I think there's a real pent-up demand for it, but as you said, it's not there yet, because the weather has
Correct.
Not cooperated with ice.
It's going to be 42 on the Saturday, I think.
So.
All me.
Good. But appreciate you thinking about that and trying to bring that feature back.
We'll, we'll issue next year.
A lot of memories shared of people who used to do that at Martin Road Park and other parks, apparently, so I think there'll be a lot of good demand for it. Thanks, Roy. All right. Now, Councilman Pollock.
Oh, no, I, I don't have anything. I gave up my time for, for Lloyd.
All right. Mayor Protam Piana.
Sure. I wanted to say thank you to Congressman Sandy Levin for holding a press conference for the cities in southeast Michigan to repeal Public Act 269, which is what our state rep Whittemore mentioned tonight. All cities through the Michigan Municipal League are still pushing very hard and advocating hard for repeal, and it will be interesting to see what happens with the 30-plus public entities that have a ballot initiative in March. They're sort of the guinea pigs of this new bill. And there's some trainings coming out for communications folks, how to communicate about ballot initiatives. So it might be something that should stay on top of. I also wanted to say thank you to everybody who's doing the Ferndale to Flint Water, and for the city for, again, stepping up to the plate and providing a building in which people can use to help, help their own donation efforts. And then I wanted to bring to attention that, since I'm MML, I'm probably going to be updating every council meeting about MML. They're coming out with a training for priority-based budgeting, which I think the city needs to stay on top of. We were starting to move towards priority-based budgeting when we went in a contract with Plant Moran to overhaul our finance system and make sure our line items on each budget is more about how much does our programs cost, and easier and more transparent about how we're, we're spending the money. That's the true intent of priority-based budgeting, and I'm looking forward to taking steps forward to make sure that we're adopting more of these principles and practices for our 2016 budget year. And I know a good start of that is coming up with some strategic planning, goal setting. So those all go hand in hand. So I just want to let staff know that it's coming up. Doesn't look like I'll be able to attend myself, because it's during a workday, but I hope Ferndale is represented. That's it.
All right. And as for me, I really just want to reiterate what the city manager said. A week from Saturday, the Michigan, the, the master land use planning, which is a fancy word of saying, what do you want Ferndale to look like? How do you want us to grow? What do you envision this city looking like? And in particular, an area that's near and dear to my heart, which is our parks and recreation, what would you like to see in our parks? What kind of features? Now that we have a cool dog park, what else would you like to see? But how would you like to see the city grow? You have an opportunity to give us that feedback. So a week from Saturday at the Rust Belt Market from 11 a.m. to 3 p.m., please consider stopping by, even if it's just for 10 minutes, to share your, your comments and your thoughts. You don't have to stay for a long time, but we really do value your input and need it in order to make the decisions about how to watch our city grow going forward. So I hope, I hope and encourage all the residents to come out to that, a week from Saturday, 11 to 3 at the Rust Belt Market. And with that, our meeting is adjourned. Thank you.